Good afternoon. It is 12:31 and we will be beginning our work session workshop agenda. Our first call to order, item 101, is we will be standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and reflection. You may please be seated. Welcome everyone and thank you for this 12:30 session being here. Here with me I have on my far left Ms. Donna Brosmer, District 4. Right beside her is Mr. Ruben Cologne, District 5. Beside him is Dr. Gilbert Evans, our School Board Attorney. And over on my far right is Ms. Celeste Gilmore, Agency Clerk. Seated next to her is Ms. Krista Goodrich, District 2. Beside her is Ms. Jamie Haynes, our Vice Chair from District 1. Beside her is Dr. Carmen J. Balgobin, our Superintendent. And I am Ms. Jessie Thompson, your Chair representing District 3. Item 2.01, our Science Instructional Materials Adoption Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask Ms. Dr. Desiree Rybinski, who is our Coordinator for Instructional Materials and Media Services, along with our very own Jen Taylor, Coordinator for K-12 Science. They're already here. I don't have to call them forward. They will be providing to you an update today regarding our instructional materials, the adoption process. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Thompson, Superintendent Balgobin, and School Board Members. I am Desiree Rybinski, the Coordinator for Instructional Materials and Media Services, and this is Jennifer Taylor. And today, we are going to provide you with an update on the Science Instructional Materials Adoption. Feel free to stop us at any time if you have a question, or at the end if you want to wait. This presentation addresses Guard Rail 2 and Guard Rail 3. And we want to start off by assuring you that our selection process has followed all Florida statutes and Volusia County School Board policy. One of the biggest components that's important that we follow, according to Florida Statute 100628, and this was put into place a couple of years ago, is the public opportunity to attend all meetings that are ranking or eliminating instructional materials. So we open to the public and notice on our website all of those meetings that you're going to see listed in the presentation today. And then, an important part is that all of our committees have parents as a part of them. It is a statutory requirement, but we value them and their input on our committees. To make sure that we had parent participation, we do an all-call via Focus Communication that includes a form for parents if they're interested. We had 93 parents who showed interest. We do a random selection. We had 19 parents commit, and then we had 12 parents who, after commitment, attended the meetings. So, all of those meetings were posted on our website. This is the Florida Department of Education Adoption Schedule. Remember, we are one year behind this adoption schedule. So currently, the Florida Department of Education is calling for and reviewing that first box, English Language Arts, K-12, Personal Financial Literacy and Money Management, Mathematics Intervention, and ELA Intervention. So we will review those next year after the Florida Department of Education has done their review and provided their list. And then you see that CTE and electives follows that with Mathematics and Computer Science, Social Studies, and then that wraps us back around to Science in a five-year cycle. This is where we currently are for Volusia. So this year, what we're presenting is the science results. So the list by the Florida Department of Education was released in the fall. It was amended a few times. All of the materials that we're putting forth to you today are on the approved list. This is a summary of our process, basically from the beginning of each cycle until the end. So over the summer, usually between July and August, we do a call for publishers. We use the digital platform EdCredible to put out a call for all publishers who are interested in Volusia, looking at and reviewing their materials. Once we close that call, we convene and select our committees. And you'll get to see who those committee members were for the science adoption. We convene those committees. We did that between September and November. And then a few of them came back in December to make the final selections. Those committees narrow down the number of selections that the schools review, making sure that we're putting forth the best materials for schools until they have limited time. Teachers have limited time to review them. So our committees do a thorough review and send forth those that they feel best meet the criteria through the rubric that we use for evaluation. So the schools and the public have opportunities for input. Then we bring it forth to you. Today is not an approval. Today is just an informational session. So over the next couple of months, we'll provide you, it'll be an action item on the agenda for each publisher as we create that agreement and contract. After those approvals are made as an action item, we have a 30-day objection period. And after that objection period, we start purchasing and distributing to schools. At the very beginning of our process, we involve our technology team. So this committee for us involves Chrissy Batrico, Tricia Ailward, and Kathy Buckelow. They meet with each publisher and they review an online questionnaire that has to do with rostering and single sign-on and security and our learning management system, which is Canvas and Universal Design for Learning. So we go through all the expectations for Volusia technology to make sure that they're meeting those as well. It's important for our district. It's important for our curriculum team and for the success of materials that we get input from the public. We offer two opportunities in person, one on the east side and one on the west side. We also had everything available digitally as soon as it was selected by the committees. And then we also had the opportunity for anyone who wasn't able to make those meetings to schedule an in-person meeting with me to review them. I had probably 10 or 12 emails, but nobody followed up to actually schedule a meeting. So we'll start with each of our committees. I know this is small, but I think it's important that each of their names are listed here. These committees do fabulous work. We could not select high-quality instructional materials without them. They spend hours looking at the materials during the meeting, after the meetings, to help make the best selection for their course. So this is a list of our Elementary Science Committee. They do break down it by grade level into subcommittees to look at their specific grade level, but we do have conversations across all grade levels. So there were 27 teachers on this committee and four parents. These are the dates that the Elementary Committee met. They met two days, September 30th and October 1st. After that, the materials were sent to schools for review and input by teachers and administrators. Then the Elementary Team came back to make a decision about those materials. These are the list of publishers, the four publishers that we started that were on the approved list, the three that the committee narrowed it down to, and the Elementary Committee selected Discovery Education. This is our Middle School Science Committee members. We had nine teachers and three parents, again, across 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. They also met for two days. The materials were sent to the schools for review. They had a little bit over a month, and then those committees or that committee came back and made recommendations. They started with a larger list. They had six publishers that they started with. They narrowed it down to two, and they also selected Discovery Education. For high school, we have several small subcommittees. We met as a larger group in our final selection. We had 37, I'm sorry, we had 25 teachers and four parents that reviewed Anatomy, Biology, Chemistry, Earth-Space Science, Physical Science, Environmental Science, Marine Science, and Physics. They met for a single day, each of those individual committees. They had about a month to review at schools, and then the committees came back and made final decisions as well. This is by course. So there are several courses. The publishers submit by course, especially in high school. There's a broader range of materials. So Anatomy and Physiology, they selected McGraw-Hill. Biology also selected McGraw-Hill. Chemistry chose Savis. Earth-Space chose National Geographic Learning, Cengage. Environmental Science selected Savis. Physics selected McGraw-Hill. Physical Science, there was only one publisher submitted. The committee still reviewed the materials to make sure that it was aligned to the standards and that it was something that they would use in their classrooms to teach. Marine Science selected McGraw-Hill as well. And this is just a nice summary from K-12, what that looks like across publishers and across courses. We also did a call for Advanced Placement Materials. So we reviewed all of the current AP courses that we have in existence to make sure that going forward, we have the materials for them. So we reviewed Biology, Chemistry, Physics, and Environmental Science. These are much smaller committees. There's only a few teachers across the district that teach them. They met on one day and made their decisions on that day. And here are the selections for those committees as well. That takes us to the most important part, which is, what is our plan to support teachers and administrators in implementing these materials? So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Taylor for her to give you a summary of what the plan is moving forward.
So basically, we first have to be trained. So we will invite the publishers to train my K-12 team. From there, we have a lot of curriculum mapping work that needs to be done. So all of our curriculum mapping materials will need to be revised. And then our Canvas pages will all need to be redone as well. We do not have one course that went with the same company as before. So they've all changed. And this is the first time in Volusia history that I'm aware of, we adopted the same publisher, K-8, which we've never done before. So that, I think, will be actually a nice transition for our elementary students to middle school because the platform will be the same. So from there, we want to make sure that everyone gets trained so that we have the same voice, the same message, and the same understanding. So our cadres, which are made up of teachers, will be trained at the Elementary K-5 level as well as middle and high. And then we will have training for all teachers at Volusia Learns in the summertime. And then we will move forward with our coaches as well as administration. And we will continue training our teachers throughout the life of the adoption. So we're very excited about this. We have a lot of work ahead. We've already talked to Dr. Balgobin about some funding that we will need to make this happen. And we have a really good plan in place to make sure that teachers have what they need. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. All right. And then our next steps after today, we'll begin working on the contracts and agreements with each of the publishers. Some of them we already have contracts with, so we will just be modifying those contracts and adding the pieces for a new adoption. Within the next few months, those will get added to the board agenda as an action item for approval, but they will all be the ones that we've referenced today. Hopefully, by March, all of that will be processed, will begin purchasing, and the delivery will be by May. So the goal is to have all the materials in schools and teachers' hands prior to leaving for summer. And that concludes our information. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Cologne?
So, my questions don't surprise you because I ask the same thing all the time, but I want to hear it out loud. Have all of these materials been approved by the Florida Department of Education?
Yes, they're all approved.
Okay. And I want to thank you for naming the committees because that's very important so that folks realize that this was not a top-down approach, rather, a top-down approach with our teachers being at the top in that sense. So that's great. The materials that were sent to the schools for preview, are they receiving everything that was put in front of them? Is it our intent to buy it? I know in the past, sometimes, and I may be going back a long time, they sent the Mercedes-Benz packages to the schools, and then we ended up buying the Kia package, which there's nothing wrong with the Kia. But we've received a lot of feedback that what we thought we were getting, we didn't get. So were we precise on what was sent to the schools for evaluation, and that's what they'll be receiving?
Yes. So they're only sent teacher manuals and student materials, so no ancillary materials.
Meaning, we will exceed their expectation when we add those materials. Great. Are there online options? Is that something that we took into consideration for all of these?
Absolutely. Every single one of them have a robust digital platform, and that's why our technology team does a thorough review to make sure that it meets our Volusia standards.
And so when we look at purchasing, or is there going to be a book option for someone who opts not to use the technology option?
We will have print for all materials. High school courses typically, they like a class set, but we typically have enough to accommodate students who need additional, rather than have to take it back and forth. But everything is available digitally, class sets. And some of them will be individual because some of them are consumable. So depending on course, the materials are slightly different. But yes, print is available.
And so this was also vetted by our ESOL department to ensure we meet the needs of those students?
Yes. The ESOL and the ESE Department all were represented at each of our meetings and provided feedback and input.
Are these materials available in Braille?
So that is a great question. So all of the materials have to be sent to the, and I don't, NEMAC? I think I might be saying that wrong. But they are sent for Braille once they're adopted. They actually already should be there because there are other districts who've purchased these materials because we're a year behind. The question that we always ask, our technology team asks that always stumps of the publishers, is a digital version of the materials that will go out to a Braille machine so that that can be used in class. But all of the materials are absolutely available in Braille and will be available to students upon the school year beginning.
That's important to me.
It is important.
Yeah. Let's make sure we get that. And then you mentioned additional support for rolling it out budgetary-wise. So you mentioned that towards the end. And then, most important, I think, and again, I like the fact that we're a year behind because typically what will happen is if we try to adopt that year, everybody's ordering at the same time, and it's a nightmare. So I think it's important that we try to get the books in our teachers' hands. And I know you mentioned that at the end. So that, at the very least, at the end of the year, they could have those materials with them. And those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, Haynes.
Hi. So he actually covered a lot. But I do, you know, you guys have come a long way. I appreciate so much that you go ahead and put the list of who the teachers are. But I like the fact that you also added the parents this year so that everyone can see that, yes, parents are invited to also come in and be part of the committee. And, you know, and the whole thing of just letting anyone from the community come in and see the materials and give feedback on that. And so I actually, too, I'm amazed that K through 8, you're going to have the same. I mean, I know that is. And that will be a nice flow because it will build each year so that when they go from 5th grade, they're not transitioning to a different publishing company in a different format and layout. And so that was nice to see. And so thank you for all the hard work you did. Because I think sometimes people don't realize how much time it takes and how many people are involved to get to this point. So thank you.
And Dr. Balgobin?
So Jen Taylor, as you know, all of you know, she is the fantastic Coordinator for Science. And we are so proud of our science course here in Volusia County. We are probably one of the trending counties in the state. Jen, as you and your team did the crosswalk between current and the new adopted standards and materials, what are the three biggest takeaway that you want the board and our listeners to understand from that crosswalk?
I think it's important to know, of course, that these were on the approved list from the state. And I think that was to our advantage because we already knew that they were aligned once we came to the table. So that was our first look at the books with the teachers and the parents is to make sure they truly were aligned. There isn't one book that's completely different than the flow we already have in place. So I think teachers are going to be comfortable actually picking up the new resource. The one thing that I'm excited about compared to previous adoptions is there's a lot more technology included with each of these publishers. And in the past, because we weren't one-to-one districts, when we adopted our materials, we didn't have that capability. So at this point, we've got certain publishers, for instance, in elementary, where they can actually use their iPads or their laptops and do a QR code, and it will bring them straight to the aligned video or resource that goes right along with. And as you know, we've had teachers asking for more videos that are aligned for science, and we haven't been able to give that to them with our old publishers. So at this point, most of these come with editable documents such as labs and PowerPoints and videos. And we're going to be able to use what we already have. And this was the big thing, that teachers wanted to make sure. We were still going to have the materials on Canvas. How many times were we asked that? So we are not getting rid of the great things that we've created with teachers because we own them. Most of what we have on Canvas, we've actually created in-house. And we did that on purpose so that when we come from adoption to adoption, it's not this complete change. This textbook becomes our resource. That's just going to support what we already have. So I'm very excited. We have a lot of training, especially in the technology area. But there's so much support that will go along with it. So...
And the built-in labs, right?
You're going to see a lot more hands-on, I hope, in the classrooms because, again, most of what you see, we have to create from scratch or we create with teachers. And most of these programs now come with those resources. So very excited about that.
Thank you, Jen. All right. Thank you, ladies both, so much for that. And I love that you're going to bring the hands-on approach. Love of that. Thank you. All right. If there's no further comment, then we will move on to item 3.01, Recruit Support and Retain Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, I would like to call at this point Ms. Tiffany Fuller, our Coordinator for Recruitment and Retention in Human Resources, along with Ms. Meg Roa, our Specialist for Professional Learning and Human Resources. As you know, we've had several pieces of new legislation where there are now additional leadership pathways. The team and I, we met, we discussed those different pathways. But I would like for you to get a comprehensive summary, that's the key word there, of these different pathways and what we're doing to build our leadership pipeline. So take it away, team. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Tiffany Fuller. I'm the Coordinator for Recruitment and Retention.
Hi, and I'm Meg Roa. I'm a Specialist in Recruitment and Retention as well.
So we have just a few things for you today. Our presentation does align with the District Strategic Plan. Guard Rail 1, Recruit Support, Develop and Retain High-Quality Staff. And so just a few updates to start with recruitment. Our goal in recruitment is to be proactive and ongoing with our recruitment efforts. So every season is recruitment season. There isn't one season for it anymore. So we host, participate in various hiring events year-round to connect with candidates and to keep Volusia County as top of mind as an employer of choice in the area. So you can see on the slide, you can see this is one of our advertisements that's in some of our marketing efforts that goes out in both print and digital media. And this is a snapshot of some of the hiring that's occurred just in this fall quarter one. This is as of October 30th. So we've had 800 hires, 290 instructional, 470 support, with 30 different recruitment events that we've hosted or participated in, touching 1,200 candidates. So we are a small team, but we work really hard to make sure that we're consistently pounding the pavement and now the airwaves and all the other mechanisms so that we're continuously building the pipeline.
Okay. So I get to talk to you about our new Teacher Academy. We revised the new Teacher Induction Program in 2223, implemented last year for the first year, so we're in year two of implementation. And in our new Teacher Academy, we have four different components. The first is induction, and that's where we have the basic foundational training such as Ethics in Our Schools, Danielson, VSAT, the Evaluation System, along with Classroom Management 101. Then we also have mentoring, where every new instructional hire to Volusia County Schools receives a mentor. But we differentiate that support based on years of experience. And the third component is our professional learning, where we transitioned from after-hours professional learning and made it job embedded, where it's real-time learning. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in the next couple of slides. And then the last component is our wellness. We really believe in that work-life balance. So we offer monthly optional wellness opportunities for all of our new teachers, and we invite others to come as well. So Showcase Classroom, this is our main professional learning opportunity that we have for our new teachers. This is, again, job embedded professional learning, where teachers get to go and visit other teachers' classrooms. So we really are developing a system of continuous improvement that aligns directly with our deliberate practice plan for our VSAT evaluation. So our new teachers, along with their mentors, they do a needs assessment. They talk about what are some areas of improvement that I want to work on in my teaching practice. And then they identify classrooms either on their campus or at a different school to go and visit other expert teacher classrooms. They debrief, develop an implementation plan, and then they monitor for impact. The areas that we really focus on with our new teachers are on the screen, classroom management being the top one. But in addition to that, we look at all of the nine major components, the power components of VSAT, digital tools, differentiated learning, et cetera. So with our Showcase Classrooms, knowing that we have so many different teachers with different needs, various levels of skills, we've, again, provided options for them. So like, when we think about the different ways that they can go and observe other teachers, some teachers really need to go into multiple classrooms. So if they chose Option 1, that means half a day, they're going to go and visit three, four classrooms. And then the other half of the day, they're going to debrief with a small group with their mentor and then possibly get some additional professional learning and make a plan to implement in their room. Another option, like 3 and 4, they may just go, they may invite their mentor or someone to come into their classroom to give them feedback, or they may just go visit one classroom. So we have a variety of options for them to complete the Showcase Classroom opportunity. Really excited about this, and we've continuously gotten strong feedback from all of our participants. From the 2324 school year, our first year of implementation for a feedback survey for our new teachers, 96% of them... 96% of them said, "If I had the opportunity to do this again, I definitely would." So we're really proud about that. And then just wanted to share for this room, this year, we ask all of our mentors and new teachers to post and share their experiences on social media. So you can see that from just two of our schools, they're learning from one another. They're supported by their mentors. And that really is part of a retention program as well because we're building community and relationships so that our new teachers feel supported. And we're also honoring the experience of our veteran teachers.
And so our Showcase Classrooms and our NTA program works to support all of our teachers in that development. And so it's a partnership that we have with our schools, our school leaders, our district leaders. So that as we're doing these Showcase Classrooms, we're tapping into the knowledge and expertise of our principals, of our, of our district leaders on curriculum to identify who those Showcase Classrooms are so that we're tapping into that expertise that we have in our district and our new teachers are getting the benefit of seeing it in action. So as we talk about the ways in which that we're continuing to both recruit, support, and retain, I know that that support piece is super important. And so New Teacher Academy is one part of that support. But certification support is another big piece of that conversation. And so within recruitment, certification is always a big part of that conversation. And so the ways that we support teachers or teacher candidates with certification is a part of that support leg. So DOE, Florida Department of Education, has several pathways towards certification, two primary routes. You're either going to get a professional certificate or a temporary teaching certificate, right? But most recently, they have started to expand those pathways past those traditional routes, right? A professional certificate is a renewable certificate typically that comes from your experience from a school of education program, most typically. A temporary certificate is a non-renewable certificate, right? And so it's our alt-certification pathway. And as we are recruiting more and more career changers and others into the profession of teaching, that is the pathway that is most often tapped into. So that temporary certificate, most recently, the Department of Education has begun to expand even those options. So past practice has been to earn a teaching certificate. You must start by having your bachelor's degree and then from there, the laundry list of needs after that kind of differentiate. Recently, within the last year, the Department of Education has expanded temporary certificates that don't yet include the bachelor's degree. And so that's some of what I'm going to highlight just a little bit for you today. The three primary positions for that are the Temporary Internship Certificate. That is a certificate that is allowable to our student interns who are in the School of Education program. They will be graduating and earning professional certificates upon their graduation. But they can certify early now. And so by certifying early, they've met the requirements by the state. They can earn this temporary certificate. And they come in with a license card that allows them to teach like a first-year teacher. And we do have interns on that pathway currently. The second one is the Teacher-Aprentice Certificate. The state initiated a Teacher-Aprentice Program that they started last school year. We have apprentices for the first time this school year in place in our, in our schools. This allows them the opportunity to earn their degree, their bachelor's degree that they need for a professional certificate. It allows them to earn that degree without incurring the cost of that degree. And in exchange, they get learning on-the-job training in a classroom with a highly, highly endorsed and highly certified teacher, a teacher mentor. And so we have several of our teacher apprentices in classes now doing this program. And then the third is the Temporary Certificate for Military Veterans that was begun the year prior. So one of the things that I wanted to share with you today is as we're building on this expansion of pathways, right? Because we know that sometimes people come into this work differently. And so we want to talk about how do we have a Volusia pathway? DOE has opened that door as to how do we start to remove barriers to provide entry into persons who want to seek out being a teacher. And so the, that program or Volusia Associate Teacher Substitute Program is an initiative focused on addressing teacher shortage, especially in our critical shortage areas, while investing in employee advancement. When you talk about recruitment and retention, when you look at the research, whether it's in education or anywhere else, a lot of the conversation is, "How are you developing me as a professional? I want to know how do I get here and how do I grow here?" And so what we're really excited about with the VATS program and some of the other previously stated certificate options is that they are about that growth option. And we look at that growth as a part of our strategic plan and as a part of our support leg. And so within this, you can see on the screen, we're looking to invest in our employees, address shortage areas. We're specifically targeting our ESE population to start, our ESE teacher population to start. And then we're building a pipeline of employees, a pipeline from our employee base who have invested interest both in our students, our community, and this profession. Some of the benefits that we're excited about with this program is that it's going to build a teacher pipeline focused on our areas of need, targeting our employees. So we're really looking at who are our office specialists and our assistants and our paraprofessionals that have been in our schools, worked in our schools, know our kids, know our school system. And they have invested in this work of education, but life and other things have kept them from completing all the steps required. This now provides an open pathway so that we can get them on the right track and get them as certified teachers. It will provide them on-the-job experience while completing their degree. They'd be earning their Bachelor's of Science in Education for free in exchange for service back to Volusia County Schools. And they would earn some of the same personnel benefits that our employees naturally earn. Questions?
All right. Did we have any questions?
Vice Chair Haynes?
Thank you for this update and all of the things that you're doing. And I like the piece about growing our own. One of the areas I think that we're still struggling in, as I'm out and about at schools, is our area of ESE. Because we know that that is a critical shortage area. And I know that, you know, we're still having to sometimes pull paraprofessionals to cover and things like that. So I'd like to know, you know, is there anything differently that we could do right now? Or any way we could connect with, you know, a different group to be able to work on that ESE piece that you guys are aware of?
Yes. So we are, like I said, recruitment is ongoing at all times. And in that end, it's not a one-stop shop. So we do have conversations with other outside partners about ways to recruit specifically for some of those more challenging to recruit areas, ESE teachers being one of them. And so we are in conversations with other ways that we can bring in additional partners who might have additional resources or talent pools that we don't directly have access to. So we're in conversations within our office and the other district departments that are connected in that work to see what might be available for us to utilize. And in addition, we do specific job fears just for that focus. And this, like I said, this pathway specifically that we'd like to launch next school year would be targeted on ESE certification areas most.
Do we have any, we'll just start with state of Florida universities or colleges that are producing more ESE teachers? And I mean, because the problem is, we watch the pendulum swing. You know, we had some great teacher programs out there at a lot of our colleges and universities. Then we kind of watched the pendulum swing and some of them shut down some of their educational departments and things like that. But do we have any area in Florida that is really focused, you know, with a strong ESE program that you're aware of?
Unfortunately, no. The reality is that a lot of our universities are, you know, they're great and they're great partners and we have great relationships with them. Most of their programs are elementary-focused. There are some that have some ESE programs, but a lot of those universities, just like, you know, you've seen it, those programs have dwindled. And so we work with our partners on an exchange so that it's kind of mutually beneficial. We're working on ways to help provide them more high school graduates to go into those programs. And so we're having those conversations on the front end so that their, their pipeline builds. And so we're having conversations with our CTE department about Teacher Academy expansions here in the district and things of that nature. Some of these programs, like the TAP program and the VATS program, will allow for some of our own employees to kind of transition into that workflow as well. But as it is as a focus area of graduates, graduation, it's, there are so many opportunities out there. And so part of it is just the enticement of that. And so it's just not a large, major pool any longer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goodrich?
Thank you for all your hard work. Great presentation. So when they get a Bachelor of Science of Education for free, how long is the commitment that they have to Volusia County Schools to receive that?
I believe it's five years, if I'm not mistaken. Four or five years.
All right. That's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cologne?
So as we were talking about, and by the way, this is like a dream come true. I'm not going to lie to you. I'll never forget, February 10th, 2019, I looked over and said, "How many vacancies do we have?" And they said, "We'll get back to you." And it took a month and a half for them to query all the schools to figure out how many vacancies we had. So as we're talking about, and I believe at the time it was 210, if I remember correctly, it was something like that. Or 220, I think it was something like that. And that's how many instructional vacancies we had. So it brought me to ask the question, Madam Superintendent, and I don't know if Ms. Workman has this information, but how many vacancies instructionally do we have right now?
I think that two cabinet meetings ago, it was 67 overall for classrooms.
We're down to 57.
Oh, thank you. That's why I said two cabinet meetings ago.
We're down to 57. So that's amazing. How many international teachers do we still have with us thereabouts? Just a guess.
About 40, about 40.
Forty-plus, okay. Great. And so I, to piggyback off Chair, Vice Chair Haynes, with the ESE part, I think you hit it on the head when you said, "These are folks who are already here, who know our kids, love our kids. They serve as substitutes when they need to, which we're grateful for." And, you know, I think the power in that is that they know what they're getting into. ESE is not easy. And so they very well know the nature of the work. And so there is value in growing that versus someone who may come in with a degree but is not prepared for the reality of, of the difficulty of that work. And, you know, of course, with there being many other options, it makes it easier. So I, kudos to you guys for not only putting in place but embracing the changes at the state level and taking advantage of those. It was at the COSBA conference, probably a couple of years ago, two years ago, we sat at a session that they were talking, I believe they were from Kentucky?
Tennessee.
Tennessee. And they, we brought up this program they had at their school. And it was like, you know, "Man, I wish we had that in Florida." And so two years later, you're presenting this. So Madam Superintendent, again, and to your team, thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, we didn't have this pipeline before. And so I'm grateful that we do now. And we have come a long way as, you know, I wish we had less vacancies. But, you know, like I said, I'll never forget when we were at 210, 220, that, that was sort of the, I would hate to say, the norm. But, you know, we're really, truly getting at a better place. So thank you.
Yeah. And we are actually having, I meant to mention, we are actually having another informational session for some of these candidates who are interested in this pipeline because there's so many questions around certification. So we're having a session before we go on the break to help them know so they can get their ducks in a row, transcript information, so that they'll be ready to take advantage of the opportunity.
Dr. Balgman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So one of the things that I'll share with you that at FADS last week, all of the superintendents we were meeting, and the ESE vacancy, it's an issue everywhere. And as you recall, last year during legislative sessions, we talked about relaxing the requirements for ESE teachers because of the double requirements. And pretty much every district, that's what, that's one of the major barriers for teachers getting into that field because of the certification process. It's so extensive and it's double certification that it requires. So two things. The team talked about the parent-to-teacher, and that, that seems very promising for us, but also tapping into our early childhood programs that we have here. We're going to be more deliberate and intentional with tapping into those programs. So Tiffany, Stephanie and I, we spoke about that. And moving next year, as we move forward next year, we want to be very intentional with those early childhood programs and having that specialization built into those programs. But I would ask the board that this year, as we get ready and gear up for that legislative sessions, again, that this needs to be a priority for us. And I shared this at FADS. I shared it with the senators that were there and the other superintendents. But if we can, and I will tell you that every district will, will join that quest with us because this is throughout the state of Florida. So.
Thank you, Dr. Balgman. And thank you guys so much for that and all the different pathways you've provided. This is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good job.
All right. Next, we have item 3.02, Employee Evaluation and Leadership Development Update.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, I would like to ask Ms. Elisa Fedigan, who's our Coordinator for Employee Performance, along with Ms. Brandy Hoag, our Coordinator for Leadership Development, they're going to share with your presentation on our employee evaluation. As you know, we have a new system that has been adopted. And it's a data collection tool. And I was very pleased to see that when I met with this team, the correlation and the alignment that we're seeing between that, the tool that we're utilizing and how that is directly correlated to the success that we're seeing in terms of students' performance. So I would like for them to share a brief update with you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So my name is Elisa Fedigan. I am the Coordinator of Employee Performance. And today, I'm going to share with you updates regarding the collaborative accomplishments of our teachers, our staff, our school leaders, and enhancing our evaluation systems. Because this really, truly was a team effort. So in the Office of Employee Performance, my work supports the overall Guardrail One, Recruit Support, Develop and Retain High-Quality Staff. And specifically with the work that we do in the office, it assists evaluators in focusing on providing that actionable, meaningful feedback piece that supports employee engagement, retention, and performance. And so over the past year, we do have steering committees that work annually on this revision work. And over the past year, our steering committees have worked to streamline and align our evaluation systems for our practices and the updated standards that we currently are working with. And so I want to share some updates regarding some of the work that we've done for our different evaluation systems. Specifically with our VSET system, which is the Volusia System for Empowering Teachers, and that is our instructional evaluation tool. So with this evaluation tool, recently, we have had to realign our rubrics to address the changes with the Florida Education Accomplished Practices, which the state refers to as FEEP. So you'll hear that term. The statutory language requires that our evaluation tool for instructional staff aligns and addresses all areas of the FEEP. So we've recently revisited that rubric and made sure that the alignments have been made there. And that has been approved by our state DOE department as well. In recent year, we have streamlined the observation scripting of evaluations to make it a more simplified process for our observers to collect evidence on classroom teachers and also for the reception of that evidence with the classroom teacher. It's easier for them to review the evidence that has been collected. And in addition, we have simplified observation cycles for our experienced proficient teachers, making that a more simplified, easier process for them to participate in. With our VCEL system, which is the Volusia System for Empowering Leaders, which is the evaluation tool for all of our school administrators. As you know, we recently have new adopted Florida Leadership Standards. And so we have aligned that entire evaluation system to those new standards, which I'll talk about in the next slide over. And then in addition to our two state-approved evaluation systems, we have a VIEW Support Evaluation Tool here in Volusia that we use specifically to address the evaluations of office specialists and paraprofessionals. And so with that tool, we've introduced a self-assessment opportunity. We're then have the ability to provide a self-assessment information and evidence toward their end-of-year evaluation. And new this year, we will be implementing an auto-calculated rating for the overall rating of the evaluation. So no longer the evaluator will select a rating. It will be very transparent in that the evaluation ratings that are selected for those individuals will auto-calculate within the system. For our non-bargaining and administrative evaluation tools, which specifically addresses our technical and professional employees in our district, we have revised that plan to where it aligns to the strategic plan. So there is an area of that evaluation now that specifically addresses the strategic plan and evaluates their work toward milestones, priorities, and metrics of the plan. And so one of the ways that we're working to be consistent And so one of the ways that we're working to be consistent across all of our systems is that with the addition of the VIEW Support and non-bargaining evaluations being auto-calculated, their score will be auto-calculated, they'll be using the same unified scale for objectivity and clarity that we use for the instructional and school administration evaluation. So it's the same and it's consistent amongst multiple plans. The other, the other change that, uh, major work that we've done this, uh, past year is revise the student growth measure. And so you may have heard some talk, um, in previous years regarding our VAM model. So we've now changed that verbiage to Student Growth Measure, which is a large component of our evaluation system. Um, and we've revised that student growth measure, which we'll talk a little bit about in a, in a next slide over, to both of our state-approved plans that apply to VSET and VCEL. And so that's regarding the student growth component that's required by statutory language that's involved in our school leader and instructional evaluation plans. So last year, um, I shared with you that the state was gonna be finalizing some new leadership standards. And so these are the Florida Educational Leadership Standards that you see here on the screen. We refer to them as FELs. They're going to be implemented this year with the School Leader Evaluation Plan. And they do serve as the foundation for leadership preparation for all certifications, professional learning, and evaluation systems across the state. So this is a new, these are new standards for all districts in the state of Florida. The FELs consists of the eight standards that you see here, which is a shift from the ten domains that we had previously. And they cover the areas on the screen, professional and ethical norms, vision and mission, school operations, management, and safety, student learning and continuous school improvement, learning environment, recruitment and professional learning, building leadership expertise, and meaningful parent, family, and community engagement. So within these eight standards, there are actually fifty descriptors that are included. And each of these descriptors, um, outline the roles and responsibilities of school leaders. So they're identified actually by principal and assistant principal, to be very specific about the roles of each of those school leaders, uh, in the building. From guidance, uh, from the state in building our evaluation plan for school leaders, our school leaders will be evaluated on all fifty descriptors that are included in the FELs, with each descriptor being weighted equally. And so the student growth measure, which is the other component of the evaluation plan, it's been revised to expand well beyond the very narrow focus it once had. So before, you may have heard us refer to VAM, and VAM really only applied to, oh, sorry. Find the arrow, oh, there it is. Button, sorry. I was touching the wrong button. It only applied to English Language Arts grades four through ten, and four through eight math, and then Algebra grades eight and nine. So it was a very narrow focus, we had a lot of talk about that. We really wanted our student growth measure to be more representative and more comprehensive to the students that are rostered onto our, uh, teacher rosters and more of a reflection of the students that are in each school. So, um, we met with our steering committees across all areas, working very, very closely with our R E A group, our Research, Evaluation, and Accountability Office. And they helped us through looking at, um, other models that other districts were using and research models. We obviously are gonna continue to utilize the value-added model, uh, but we initiated a Effect Size Model, which was a decision and recommendation of, um, our steering committee. And we also will utilize the Performance Model. So we will use three different models now to identify that student growth measure for each, um, of our teachers. So what is the value-added measure? It is, like I said before, it is the, um, ELA assessments for grades four through ten, four through eight math, and Algebra one. And DOE actually will calculate the score. It is a three-year aggregate comparing a teacher's, student's performance relative to similar students across the state. So it's not necessarily how well the students did on the assessment, but it looks at how the students did on the assessment in relation to other students that have similar descriptors. And then the Effect Size is, is the model that we, here in Volusia, have developed and are, have adopted. And that is, uh, uh, calculated through our R E A office. And that looks at ELA scores for kindergarten through tenth-grade students that are rostered on teachers' classrooms. And kids in K through eight, that should say math, that's missing the word math there, so I apologize for that. And it specifically looks at their growth from the Progress Monitoring One Assessment to Progress Monitoring Three. And then the last model, it looks at the Performance Model, and that evaluates the percentage of students that score a Level Two or higher on things like the E O C, the A P exams, Alternative Assessments, and the Science Assessments, and Level Three or higher on ACE and I B. So teachers that have multiple courses, um, in different growth measures, they will receive the highest score from their calculations. And then the average of those calculations is in use for courses that are within the same measure. So we're always looking at the, the teacher's best interest there and looking at how their students', um, data is used for their evaluation. Faculty members that are not in rostered courses, such as your counselors, your elective teachers, and those in non-tested core subjects, they receive the school's ELA and math effect size, because we do calculate that as well. And then we look at, uh, the, the students that are in Survey Two and in Survey Three for the student growth measure, and we measure the growth from PM one to PM three divided by the standard deviation. My office doesn't personally handle that calculation, that is the work of the R E A office, but they do work very closely with me and report that data to me so that my office can report it out in the evaluation tool. So when we're talking about the, the student growth measure for the school leaders, we've tied their student growth measure directly to the teachers' growth measures in, in the schools. So when we're looking at that, we're determining, um, that by looking at, um, the multiplying the number of students or tests that are assessed by, by each teacher by their respective student growth measure score. And so for the example that we show here for a teacher in the school, their particular student, uh, growth measure was calculated through the Effect Size Model, and their score was a three. They provided, um, there was a hundred and twenty-five tests for this particular assessment. And so the weight value for this teacher is a three point seven five. We then take the total number of students or tests that is summed for the entire school, and the weighted values are then aggregated to calculate a school-level total. And then the average student growth is obtained by dividing the total weight value by the total number of students or tests. So we're tying that evaluator's, uh, student growth measure directly to the impact of teachers and students in the classroom. For this particular example, this school leader's, uh, student growth measure would be a Level Three or Effective. And then tying it back to our evaluation data for twenty-three, twenty-four, if we look at last year's data, it has been demonstrating some consistent, uh, performance trends. Ninety-nine percent of our teachers and a hundred percent of our administrators did earn effective or higher ratings based on their evaluation data from last school year. And that is consistent with the last five years of data that we have tracked, indicating that on average, fifty-seven percent of our teachers and eighty-six percent of our school leaders, um, have earned a rating of Effective. And forty-three percent of our teachers and fourteen percent of our school leaders have earned a rating of Highly Effective. So, um, to meet our requirements in the state, we do have our evaluators go through, rigorous training at the beginning of every year, it's an annual required training called Inter-Rater Reliability Training. And we do that to ensure accuracy and consistency across assessments. So essentially, we want to make sure that they're able to, uh, conduct a classroom and observation, identify good teaching, and be able to assess that, um, on the Administrative Observation Tool. So the baseline data from our updated growth measures show that we have high correlation of over eighty percent that our school leaders and our teachers have evaluations that align with their student performance measures. Meaning if we saw good instruction in the classroom, you were able to accurately identify that. And then it was, it was actually reported on that student roster data for the student, uh, performance measure, that student growth measure. So we like that high correlation on that baseline data. We're gonna continue to look at that information, um, to identify areas that we can continue to grow. When we look at how that affects the overall summative score, uh, for our, uh, teachers and for our administrators, the Instructional Practice Score or the Leadership Practice Score, that's sixty-five percent of their summative evaluation. And forty percent of that for teachers is that Administrative Observation. So we feel that it's very important for us to make sure that they are being able to accurately and consistently identify and assess good teaching. That student growth measure that we discussed, um, that we have recently, um, revised the models of using either VAM, the Effect Size, or the Proficiency Model is worth, is weighted at thirty-five percent of their overall summative evaluation score. So as we look forward, um, and moving into the work that drives my office, some best practices that we're gonna continue with is Inter-Rater Reliability Training. Uh, we do feel this does sharpen our observer's skills, and it identifies areas where we need to support our observers and those that are ready to mentor their colleagues. We also want to consistent with, uh, continue with consistent communication and follow up with our evaluators on a regular basis to help them gain confidence. As Meg mentioned, I work, uh, with our teachers, I work very carefully with, um, our Leadership Development Department to train our evaluators, uh, whether they're at the, um, Dean, Assistant Principal, or Principal level. We're gonna continue our frequent communication and follow-up and support of them on a regular basis. And then some action steps, we're continually looking at ways to improve, um, and streamline our processes. The work is never done in our office. And so one of the things we're gonna continue to do, even though we just revised our VSET, is we're gonna continue to look at ways, um, that we can streamline and refine this process. Uh, one of the things that, um, Mrs. Albert and I have recently spoken about is putting together some work in our steering committees to look at, look for us for our VSET, to kind of streamline that process even further and identify those good teaching practices. So that's the work we'll be doing moving into the spring, um, as we continue to look at ways to refine our processes. And lastly, we're always analyzing our trends and identifying areas where we can close the gap between our instructional evaluation and our student performance outcomes. We'll continue to work on that, um, in my office and working in conjunction with our New Teacher Academy, our Leadership Development Department, um, and our unions as well, so. Lastly, here is, um, my contact information, and I want to give a shout-out to, uh, Ms. Linda Hamilton, who is the other part of my department. Uh, she's the H R assistant in my department. We work really hard to support our evaluators. We do have, um, five unique systems that we manage, six evaluation tools, um, and that is, uh, supports over eight thousand employee evaluations on a yearly basis. So, uh, we take great pride in the support that we provide our leaders in our schools, and not only them, but our district and department evaluators as well on a regular basis. So I would like to thank her and thank you for your time today as I give you this evaluation update.
Thank you. Um, Madam Vice Chair Haynes?
Thank you. So, as we're going through this, when we got over to slide number five, we're missing some of the slides that you showed, that I think are very important. I think we're missing at least three of the slides, so is there any way possible, what you currently used, um, for us to view that we could get to Celeste and we could switch out? Because, um, we jumped straight to this and didn't have, like, the slide that you showed before it. And then we also, there's a missing slide prior to this one, and then I think one more on the other page, because the information is great, okay? But I think anybody that later wants to look at this, because I think what we'll see is we may see some of our teachers and administrators wanting to see what was presented today. And what's currently up there doesn't have all the pieces and parts.
Correct. It's part of a transition, so we'll go ahead and make those individual slide pieces for the sake of, yeah.
Okay.
Of being able to refer to at a later time.
I, uh, like I said, the information on them is great, and I think it'll help us to, if asked a question. But I think we need to update it. And, um, as far as the Inter-Rater Reliability Training goes, I myself had to do that because I had to evaluate people under different categories in my previous job role. And that is not easy. It, it is, it's very difficult, because tip, I will just tell you, I'm typically harder than some, in some areas than what you're supposed to be when you go in to evaluate. I'm being honest, okay?
Shocked.
Yeah, you're, you're shocked. But you, you have to watch these videos, and you have to evaluate someone on the document in the time that the video is happening, and you have to score within a certain range to be able to say, "Okay, you can go and evaluate this year." And so, I, I'm glad to see you're continuing, but it, but it's not a simple task to go in and do these evaluations. There's a lot of work that's put in. And we do have how many different categories that, you know, people, and every tool, every category is different that you have to evaluate people under. The one with the Office Specialist, so if I heard you correctly, this year it's going to feed in, um, to the system and generate?
Correct. So the evaluation ratings will all have a value, one to four, just like we do for our VSET and VCEL plans. And based on the rating that is assigned to each indicator, it will auto-calculate, um, that overall rating.
Okay. The only, um, issue I've ever had with the current document that has been used for Office Specialist is that in order to give them, like, a Highly Effective, you had to have a full comment with documentation for them, and, and you know, there's how, I mean, I think there's twenty-six, I, you know, and you, you, if you don't have a comment, then they can't have that rating. And I will tell you, from one year to the next, it's like, how many different ways can I put a comment for, you know, the individual that's doing this job, who does it very highly effective? But you have to have a comment there. And that was always frustrating on, I'll be honest with you on my end, because, you know, especially if someone works with you for ten years. How, for ten years, do you say it in a different way each year when you know that they are meeting that expectation?
Right. We've eliminated, um, we've streamlined it to where you don't have to have the piece of, the, the evidence or the artifact evidence, but we do still want, we still are requesting, um, that there is a statement, something that's objective. Um, and one of the things that I share in training is that, you know, when we give the evaluation, it should never be new information. It should always be a recap of something that has already occurred or some other conversation that you've already had, and this is just a review. So even if you've said the same thing year after year, I think our employees, and we do encourage them, even though we don't require a comment, um, or a feedback statement for meets expectation, you will hear what me often say, and you'll ask evaluators, they'll, they'll, they'll tell you that I've said it. I still encourage them to try to find something to write on there if they can, because our employees like that feedback. It's great to give it to them on a pat on the back, but it's, means something extra when it's also written in writing and black and white on the evaluation at the end of the year. So I always encourage them to try to provide that feedback. It does take a little extra time, but I think it's, it's something that our employees value, and I think it's something they deserve, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Cologne?
So, not being an educator, I appreciate the fact that you all have figured this all out. Because the state rating system and one thing, the other, and how teachers are evaluated is very, very, if, if you're not familiar with it, it's confusing, but at best. Do we have the names, and if you don't have it now, of the folks that participated in each of these committees? I think it's always important for folks to realize who were the folks who were at the table to, uh, come up with this very, very complicated, uh, formula. And, and again, it's, I wish it was as easy as we have in private industry where you evaluate each employee. It's not that easy, so again, I'm, I'm grateful for that. But if you can get that to us, um, if that's okay with Madam Superintendent?
It, it's fine. I just want to share that the tool and the committee, I think they were presented last year before we sent this into DOE, correct?
We, we, yes, we did send, we did provide the committee members.
Okay. So if you will just get that and, and put it, yeah, send it to?
They deserve the acknowledgement, because last year was quite a year, uh, with both the VSET and VCEL needing to be revised by requirements from the state. So those committees put in a lot of work, so I sincerely appreciate their time and effort.
You know, I, I just think it's important, because a lot of times folks thinks that, think that we are doing that from the dais here, when in reality, I wouldn't even know where to start. Uh, and so again, I'm grateful to everyone who came together to, uh, come up with these tools for not only themselves and their colleagues. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you, because I know it's not simple. Some of it doesn't make any sense, some of it makes sense, some of it made sense to someone, and we have to live with it. Uh, and so I am grateful for that. You mentioned that there was an automated tool that was gonna be used for certain groups. Is there an opportunity for some sort of a dashboard so somebody can know? You said, you mentioned that- You said, you mentioned that some of the school's data was going to affect the individual's evaluation, so if I'm a non, and I'm trying to sound smart here, if I'm a non-rostered teacher, I have to live with the ELA score of the entire school versus not the students that I may have had direct contact with. Is there a way for them to, I don't know how they would appeal that, it just seems like it may not be a reflection of their actual performance, because if they, you know, the math score, how does that impact, how does the librarian, or media specialist, sorry, who doesn't have a roster per se, or do they? I don't know. How do those teachers get, not get, I don't want to use the word screwed, but how do they not get negatively impacted by something they have no control over?
Understood, I understand, understand.
I know it's complicated.
It is, it is, and thank goodness for our REA department, because I rely heavily on them to provide some models for us to look at. And so they provided multiple models, looking at different ways in which we could represent those teachers in the best light. And really in actuality, in being an elementary non-core teacher myself at heart, I always felt that the work that I did, even though I did not teach a tested area, that I was supporting the ELA in math, that is the core foundation of that instruction at schools. Everything that I did with my, with my roster students was supporting that in some capacity. So we did look at different models, and the, using the school's ELA and math scores, the effect size, was most favorable for our non-roster teachers. Not to say that we're not continuing to look at ways to identify that, but really the only way outside of what we're currently doing to do that would be to, in all honesty, develop a final exam for every one of those subjects, for every type of class that is, or not class. And that is nothing that any district in the state is wanting or willing to do, because it's not feasible, really.
I think your point is well-taken, but it just reminds me, and I know this is going to come around, and I'm not even looking over at Ms. Albert, because it's a matter of mean. So mean says, here's the middle, but there's the person over here who's going to get positively impacted by this, but that means there's the persons over here equally are not going to get positively impacted, and those are usually the loudest ones.
Well, and we did look at that to make sure that we weren't negatively impacting our teachers by making that decision. But we will consistently and continually always look at ways, because as we have, things, things change all the time in education, and assessments change, and things are made available to districts that were not available before. So that's always going to be a conversation that we'll, we'll look at. But I think we, we've come together with a plan that we feel is effective at this point in time, and we've implemented it now for two years, and we're seeing some good connections between our administrative observation data and our student growth measure data, and that's important to me in my office, because, you know, I, I want to make sure that our evaluators are able to identify that good teaching and that it's reflected in the student outcomes that we see coming out of our classrooms.
Perfect, thank you. Madam Superintendent, if, I know we're going to make a revision to the agenda item to ensure those slides get in, can we also include the names of all the folks who are part of all these committees so that it's visible to everyone?
Absolutely.
So that folks can see that it's their peers who came up with the evaluation system and not, I mean, we are, we are supporting the work that these folks are, have brought forth for us to, to consider and their recommendation. If I remember correctly, we accepted the recommendation of the committee, so if you're okay with that, Madam Superintendent, if we can add that to it, that'd be great, thank you.
Absolutely, Vivian.
And Dr. Baugaven?
I just want to share to your point, Mr. Cologne, that what you stated in terms of the teachers and the effect size, now with this revision, they do have the option of choosing the one that best benefits them, right? They have that, so for example, you've got the three options that are there, one of them, it's the proficiency, the second is the learning gains, but for many, many years, I will tell you that it has been where there was just only one option.
Right, and that option was so very narrow, very narrow focus, so it left a lot out.
Correct, some of it did not even apply, as Ms. Fedigan shared. But what, the beautiful thing about all this, when I was listening and looking at the data sets that were presented to me, is that the work that the committee did has a high correlation value to the effect size that we're seeing when it comes to students' learning. So the tool that they're utilizing in the classrooms, right, to depict whether learning is taking place, students are engaged, and then when you look at the data sets in terms of what students are producing, there's a high correlation, and I think that speaks volume to the committee and the work that they have done, and that's to your point that you've made.
And Mr. Cologne?
And so I'm a little bit confused, because I'm sitting on the other side, but I just had a déjà vu moment, except it was from right to left instead of left to right, because you're over there, and I was sitting over there. Because I remember saying, you know, I remember you saying that other districts did that, where they were able to select which evaluation tool, and we said, oh, that would be great. So the fact that it's coming for us, before us this way, again, it was kind of weird sitting on this side. Don't ask me how that has an impact in my life, but...
Yeah, you're right, you're right over there.
But I remember you saying that, and so again, thank you, because of that, I think that was a happy medium that we were hoping for, and so to see it come back, it's awesome. Thank you.
Vice Chair Haynes?
I'll add a little piece of history to what she shared with you, because she was in one of those positions with not a core class. Her last position was at Deltona Middle.
She's hired.
Teaching art in the, her last classroom position, because she taught my daughter art at Deltona Middle, before she went into administration and became an assistant principal. And so she, I mean, and art has math and ELA and all of that in it, but it was very difficult, because it was very narrow for any of those, any individual teaching something outside of the core courses, so, thank you.
One more.
Mr. Cologne?
Is there, and here we go in the land of rainbows and unicorns, is there any consideration taken for the number of ESE students that a teacher may have versus students? So if I'm that art teacher, and my school has a higher number of ESE students, is there a consideration for that in there? And you don't have to answer me now, we could talk about this later, but I'm curious, because again, you know, if we talk about apples to apples, if I'm teaching at a school with thirty percent ESE, then my school's grand score may not be, not, you know, it's never going to be a hundred percent, because there's a lot of variations and stuff like that. So I guess that's a question we could take offline, I'm just curious.
Well, just to briefly address it, I think when, what the, the topic there is that we're always looking at learning gains, is that's very different sometimes than proficiency.
Gotcha.
And the people that I think can really articulate what that looks like when we place it in models, because we had that exact question come up in our, in our steering committees, and we worked those models out, we flushed that out by looking at different schools with different populations. If we would like to look that deeper, we can talk to REA, because they're really the ones that work those numbers for me and just report to me, that's their specialty. But we did look at that, and so it's really a difference between that proficiency versus learning gains, and the effect size really looks at learning gains. So it does accommodate for some of that, but they can speak to that more, more, in more detail.
And the reason I think of that, as you, as, as we know, we've, we've increased many of our class sizes, and so what I'm afraid of is, and I wonder what the impact is with the increased class size, and, you know, and I think, again, you can't, it's not apples to apples if you're already at an inert disadvantage, so that's deep, I know, it's in my head. We'll talk later, you'll know what I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne, and thank you guys so much for saying that, that was extremely informative. All right, if there are no more comments or questions from the board, we will have a regular session board meeting.
Oh, no, no.
Halfway done.
Oh, shoot.
We've got three point zero two.
Oh, there's more.
I'm so sorry.
I'm only the evaluation. She's the leadership development piece.
Ms. Hoag, it's very short.
You know, I was wondering about her piece, I was like, wow, all right, I'm so sorry.
You almost got off.
So close.
I tried. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Thompson, School Board members, and Superintendent Baugaven. My name is Brandy Hoag, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Coordinator for Leadership Development for Volusia County Schools. I am honored to be with you this afternoon to provide you a brief update on some of the work that is currently happening in the Leadership Development Office. I want to start by saying, as shown on the graphic on the slide that you're seeing, the Leadership Development Office is one part of a broader system of support for Volusia County Schools. While you'll hear me refer to the Leadership Development Office throughout this presentation, I just would like to note that the office is really a team of two of us, and I'd like to give a shout-out to my assistant, which is Colleen Windburn, so we appreciate all the work that she helps support in the office. I also work very closely with Elisa Fedigan, that's kind of why we're a team package up here, to support the evaluation process and the development of our, our leaders. So a key focus of my role is leadership recruitment and support, which is essential for building a strong talent pipeline and supporting succession planning across the district. Leadership development, however, is not the responsibility of one person or one department alone. It is a collaborative effort shared by leaders across the entire district. During this presentation, I will be able to share with you a few of the other key roles that help support leadership development throughout the district. Touch it with my slides. This slide that's currently displayed highlights the key responsibilities and initiatives of the Leadership Development Office in building a strong leadership pipeline and supporting succession planning across the district. A primary focus is creating a robust leadership pipeline to meet future leadership needs and maintain organizational stability through effective succession planning. The office supports hiring managers by identifying qualified candidates for leadership positions, streamlining the hiring process, and ensuring that the right people are placed in the right Additionally, the leadership capacity is strengthened through targeted training and developing, development, equipping newly assigned, current, and aspiring leaders with the skills and knowledge needed for success. Collaboration within district supervisors is also a priority, providing customized leadership development and training to address specific challenges and build stronger teams. Partnerships with colleges, universities, and professional organizations play a vital role in bringing additional resources and expertise to leadership development initiatives. All efforts are aligned with the new Florida Educational Leadership Standards, which we refer to as the FELLS, and a state-approved leadership plan, ensuring that programs meet the highest standards and they lead to Level Two Principal Certification for qualified candidates. These initiatives collectively build and sustain strong leadership across the district, ensuring schools and students are supported by effective leaders. I coordinate a variety of training programs for different phases along the pathway to principalship, ranging from aspiring teacher leaders to new principals. I'd like to share a few details about each of these programs with you. The pathways to principalship orientation consist of informational sessions for anyone wanting to learn more about the process and the requirements of becoming a school-based administrator within our county. The Aspiring Leaders Academy is a one-year professional learning program for instructional personnel that are currently certified in ed-leadership, and they are interested in pursuing an administrative position within the next two years. The program is a great tool in our succession planning and an opportunity for us to establish relationships while we continue to develop our future leaders. And I'll actually be back this evening to recognize our current aspiring leaders. Administrative deans meet monthly, we actually met this morning prior to today's meeting, for training and develop leadership skills. Our administrative deans are responsible for performing a wide range of duties associated with the demands of managing the school building and campus, while allowing for experience and training they need to develop as future school-based administrators. All of our deans are certified in ed-leadership and are aspiring to become assistant principals. I also coordinate monthly training for new assistant principals, where they receive training from district administrators to develop and strengthen their institutional and operational knowledge as a new administrator in our schools. The Principal Preparation Program is a comprehensive, two-year professional development program to prepare aspiring principals for the demands of achieving the principalship. This program is based on the Florida Educational Leadership Standards and aims to build leadership capacity through an extended series of professional growth opportunities and experiences, and it concludes with school principal certification that is approved and awarded by the state. Principals in their first two years of principalships actually meet to engage in professional learning, and we meet on a monthly basis, and we have, we have partnered with Stetson University, and we are participating in a ten-month professional learning series aimed to develop interpersonal leadership skills, an ultimate goal of building positive school cultures through strong relationships, and to be able to retain our teachers. Additionally, all first and second-year principals participate in a structured, monthly mentoring program, pairing them with experienced veteran principals. This program provides guidance, fosters collaboration, and supports new leaders in developing the skills and confidence they need to lead effectively. So the slide that you see in front of you at this time just kind of captures all the different programs that are coordinated from the Leadership Development Office. Upgrowing a strong leadership pipeline has become more critical than ever. While many are actually aware that there's a national teacher shortage and its implications, not everybody recognizes that there's actually fewer leaders, fewer individuals developing to become leaders. When we have a teacher shortage, it creates a leadership shortage, and ultimately creates a superintendent shortage as well. So we know that growing our own leaders is absolutely essential, and that is why you see that progression of different programs that are coordinated through the Leadership Development Office. We know that that is because many individuals are retiring, we knew that there was going to be kind of a pocket in, in our state of Florida and in our district of retirees, and we've had to work through that through the last couple of years. I share this as often as I can, just to make sure everybody's aware, the national average right now tenure for a principal is four years. So we want to work really hard to support our principals and their roles, so they continue to be effective leaders and impact student achievement, but four years is the national average right now, so that's something we have to look at and make sure that we are supporting those, those leaders. Hiring the wrong leader can actually set an organization or a school back anywhere from one to ten years. And having a system in place to grow your own is absolutely essential. That is the one thing that we do have control of, is being able to design and coordinate our own leadership development programs. Just want to share some data and some facts with you that you see presented on the screen. The Leadership Development Office coordinates trainings every month, and this impacts over a hundred leaders on a regular basis. One thing that we are very proud of, that we just were able to accomplish in this past year, is we transitioned forty-two teachers on assignment into administrative dean positions. I'm going to share a little bit more about that with, with you in a couple of minutes, and we've updated all those job descriptions. We unpacked the new leadership standards with all of our school-based administrators this summer at the Admin Institute, and if you see the data regarding our aspiring leaders program, we have had sixty-eight participants over the past three cohorts, and twenty-nine of those individuals have been promoted to leadership roles once they've completed that program. So we are very pleased with that specific data. We've had sixty-three of our principals participate in the Stetson Leadership Series. We are mentoring all nineteen of our first and second-year principals currently, and out of our past four Principal Preparation Program cohorts, we call that the PPP, we've had thirty-seven assistant principals appointed to principalships. We have forty-three new assistant principals that have been appointed in the past four years, and forty principals have five years or less of experience, which is a total of fifty-seven percent. So again, that's another reason that we have to make sure we have strong supports in place, because we have... because we have quite a few new leaders leading our schools. And this next slide just kind of captures what I've already mentioned, we did transition forty-two of our administrative TOAs into new dean roles, and this is really twofold. It allows our deans to have more experience with leadership opportunities, and it also gives our principals and our assistant principals some additional support on their campuses, so they can be involved in those classrooms and they can be focused on the teaching and leading and learning, while our deans are having some experience handling some of those managerial type of duties, which are great stepping stones to get them ready for the assistant principal position. And what we're also seeing is we're seeing a number of our deans are being selected for assistant principal positions, so they're applying for those positions, they're interviewing for those positions, and they're coming out as the top contenders, and that's because they've had the experience of being those administrative deans in those schools and those leadership opportunities. So we believe that's going to enhance our succession planning greatly in our district. I tried to do that super fast, and I apologize, because I know you weren't necessarily expecting a part two. Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions? That was great, thank you, and you went through that super fast, and there's a lot of information there, so thank you so much. All right, last check, any comments, questions from the board? All right, so now, stop me if I'm getting too crazy, but we will have a regular session board meeting at four thirty. Thank you so much. Ms. Brosmer?
Thank you. Just one quick question, you mentioned that the average term for, correct me if I miss, if I misunderstood this, the average term for a principal is four years? And then what?
They go on to, a lot of times they go into district positions, or they, they have a lot of, principals have a very strong skill set and are very attractive in the business world as well, so a lot of times they can go on for additional opportunities outside of education as well.
Okay, thank you, that was kind of what I expected, and so just as a random observation and not something that is part of, of your presentation, what kind of jumped out at me is that obviously this leadership pipeline is critical, the succession pipeline is, is necessary. But what also jumped out at me is that we don't have the same kind of opportunity for, for those who just want to teach, and that strikes me as, as a deficiency in the, in the overall system, that they don't have the same kind of opportunities for progression, and so I just wanted to make that as a general observation, but thank you for this, it's very helpful.
Okay. Everything's cleared, any other comments or questions from the board? I'm going to try this for a third time. We will have a regular session board meeting at four thirty PM, it is currently two oh three PM, and this meeting is adjourned.